All right, good evening, everybody. Record, five fifteen P M on Thursday, June eighth, twenty twenty-three. The city council is out of executive session. I've called the regular meeting to order. We always start with the pledge to our flag. Whose turn is it?
I'm betting it's mine.
All right, Councilmember Huffaker.
Please rise and remove your hats. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Huffaker.
My pleasure.
For the record tonight, we have six council members here. And Councilmember Harold is excused today. Our first item in our agenda would be citizen comment. If any member of the audience should like to address the city council on something that's on today's agenda or not. We don't have any public hearing items, so this would be the only time for you to address the city council on anything that you'd like to talk to us about. Anybody willing to address the council? Seeing no takers, we will start our meeting with our consent items. And please note, we need to add an agenda item E regarding an agreement on the opioid abatement council. So I would entertain a motion.
Your honor, I make a motion that we adopt the consent items, including this evening's agenda. And this motion includes amending that agenda to add an agenda item E regarding an interlocal agreement for the opioid abatement council for the north central region. Specifically, this agenda title would read, interlocal agreement among Schlang County, Douglas County, Grant County, Okanagan County, City of Wenatchee, City of East Wenatchee, and City of Moses Lake. And this will be presented by Executive Services Director Laura Gloria. This motion includes the vouchers and minutes from previous meetings and resolution, approval of resolution two zero two three dash one three declaring certain property surplus to the needs of the City of Wenatchee and authorizing the Public Works Department to dispose of the personal property identified herein.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Hornby, to approve this evening's agenda, including item E regarding an agreement for the development of the opioid abatement council and to approve the vouchers and minutes from our previous meetings and to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirteen declaring certain property surplus to the needs of the City of Wenatchee and authorizing the Public Works Department to dispose of the personal property identified herein. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do you find anything you wanted to buy in the surplus?
Checks.
Yeah? You like that?
I do like that.
All right, we've got five action items today. The first regarding our pavement preservation program, so authorized to negotiate. You don't look like Charlotte, but Rob Jammerman, Public Works Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, I told you Charlotte to take the evening off, so I present this for her. This is for our twenty twenty-four pavement preservation. We have about a two million dollar budget next year for this, and we always start our design in the year prior. So we're asking that the city council authorize the mayor to negotiate with KPG Somas on the design services for the twenty twenty-four pavement preservation project and then authorize the mayor to sign the contract. Charlotte asked me to point out in your packet, page two, are those identified streets that we'll be looking at in twenty twenty-four. You can see there's various residential streets. The largest of those is, of course, a complete overlay of Orchard, all the way from Miller to Western. So that'll be, that'll be the biggest one next year. But we start, we start design now. There's a lot of ADA ramps we have to design for. We do corines out there to make sure that we're, our subgrade is adequate. And so it takes this time, and then we'll, we'll put that project out to bid in February of twenty twenty-four. Any questions?
Once a bid is accepted, does that lock us in on the price of asphalt? Or is that subject to change with oil prices?
It's typically when we, we put it out to bid and when we open the bids and it's locked in at that price. That's for construction, yeah.
So right now, we're doing all the design work. And then we probably, if this dance is the normal dance that we've been seeing for the last three or four years, this will be the design work. And we'll hear from Jake Lewing about what other streets he would like to pave if we found more money for them. And next January or February, you guys will get to make that decision and figure out. But right now, it's budgeted for two million.
Two million.
And they gotta start all the design stuff, yeah.
I always come back and budget with asking for some more because our.
And we always tell them no, right?
You tell me sometimes yes. And so, but we're, you know, our PCI program says that we should be investing about four million per year. We're, we've made some great headway with the car tabs, but we're still short, so. But this, this gets the design going, which is important.
Thanks. All right, any questions for Rob? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your honor, I make a motion for city council to authorize the mayor to negotiate with KPG Somas, Inc. for design services for the twenty twenty-four pavement preservation project number twenty-three oh one and further authorize the mayor to sign a contract on behalf of the city.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Roger Nositi, and second by Councilmember Hornby, to authorize the mayor to negotiate with KPG Somas, Inc. for design services for the twenty twenty-four pavement preservation project number twenty-three oh one and authorize the mayor to sign a contract on behalf of the city. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Rob.
Thanks.
Columbia River Homeless Housing Task Force agreements. Mr. DeVries.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before you, I have a request from the Columbia River Homeless Housing Task Force for some grant extensions and one new grant category. I provided a copy of the cash flow that was put together by the Finance Department by Brad, which we appreciate, just to show you that with the proposed expenditures and where we're at with our existing grants, that we do have sufficient cash flow. If you look in that category on the spreadsheet on cash balance on the right-hand side, you can see that by December twenty twenty-three, we would be at one point eight, over one point eight million at the end of the year.
Glenn, can I get one of those, please?
I'm sorry.
I got, you can have mine. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Small rental fee. Checks in the mail.
So, and you know, even with the expenditures and the proposal, we have sufficient balances and, and the surpluses we'll be seeing in the upcoming years will be looked at with a strategic plan update that would, starting this year and be going into next year. And we'll have a public process and the council will be involved in that, which was anticipated when we got into doing local tax, that we do the initial establishment of shelters, shelters and outreach, and then be looking at allocations that will further help placing individuals out of homelessness into, into housing and services. So that's coming in the future. So just included that so you could see that we have sufficient capacity as we look at the proposal before you. So we have two things tonight. One, our contract extensions. One of the things that we have is we have existing contracts that were done that expired this month. If you recall, we just recently did new contracts with the Wenatchee Rescue Mission for pallet shelter facilities, for the Safe Park facilities, for outreach and management, and also for the People's Foundation for Shelter Facilities. Those end in twenty twenty-four in December. We wanted to take the existing contracts we have and align those. And those are contracts with the Women's Resource Center for the twenty permanent supportive housing units for operations that we help fund. For the Women's Resource Center, they have a landlord-tenant liaison program, which we fund the majority of, that helps place individuals who have housing vouchers and pairs them with private tenant, private landlords in the valley. And it's very successful. We also help fund the Y W C A for seven permanent supportive housing units for their operations. So the proposal is to extend those contracts and get them onto the same review schedule that we have for the other contracts that I mentioned. And then in doing our updated strategic plan for homelessness, then we can review fund priorities all at once in concert with each other and being able to prioritize funds and also coordinate with and looking at what the county's doing at the same time. In addition to that proposal to extend those grant contracts to the end of twenty twenty-four, we also have a new proposal before you, and that's toward a diversion flexible funding hotel voucher system. There are currently provisions for this that are in place, but they're expiring because some state funds are expiring. We also have, looking at a reduction from county funds being able, available for this use. Two things, the hotel vouchers, what that does, it's proposed to be used by our three homeless shelters. They have a lot of situations that would occur at the last minute, especially for women and women and children, where a housing voucher for a hotel up to seven nights is extremely useful and it gives us time to work with providers and stabilize those households while solutions are looked at. Additionally, diversion funds. Those have been a great tool for, to keep folks from homelessness or to exit homelessness where a variety of things, such as transportation costs, minor repairs to vehicles, incidental expenses, you know, with a minor infusion of funds, it can exit someone from homelessness. Providing those tools to our shelter providers is a great resource and can, has, has been shown to be a real benefit. And the funds are being reduced locally. So the proposal and the task force is asking that you fund that for the Wenatchee Rescue Mission Shelter, the People's Foundation Shelter at Saint Francis, and the Y W C A Shelter for both the ability to do the housing vouchers for hotels and the diversion funds. So those are the proposals before you. I'd be happy to, we're asking that you allow the mayor to sign those contracts and happy to answer any questions you might have.
And these are the recommendations that are Columbia River Homeless Task Force. I saw you guys meeting the other day. No, no questions for me. Any questions for Glenn? Not, I would entertain a motion.
Your honor, I'd make a motion for the city council to authorize the mayor to enter into the grant agreements recommended by the Columbia River Local Homeless Housing Task Force as outlined in the agenda report.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Cuevas, to authorize the mayor to enter into grant agreements recommended by the Columbia River Local Homeless Housing Task Force as outlined in the agenda report. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you.
Parkside renovation, change order number one. Mr. Aaron Kelly.
Good evening, Mayor. City Councilmembers, Aaron Kelly, Public Works Operations Manager. I'm here tonight with a couple items. The first one being Parkside Renovation Project, change order number one, between the City of Wenatchee and Rudnick and Sons LLC, in the amount of three hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and nine dollars. The renovations are underway. We're about eighty percent complete. The funding for this project is through the Department of Commerce grant for behavioral health facilities. The grant dictates that the funding is to be spent on behavioral health facilities particularly. And as the parksite facility is occupied by both American Behavioral Health Systems and the Women's Resource Center, we can only actually fund the portion of the building for American Behavioral Health Systems. And as we are repairing the roof on the side of American Behavioral Health Systems, we've also needing to be able to replace the Women's Resource Center side of the building. So the change order number one includes replacing the roof over Women's Resource Center and the cost of two hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars. And again, this amount is not covered by the grant, but we discussed it at Finance Committee and then also the, which identified homeless funds, which also support the Women's Resource Center, as Glenn just was mentioning. But then also, we've taken it to the Columbia River Homeless Housing Task Force, and they also approved funds to be able to be used for the roof.
So we use our homeless funds to cover the roof?
Yep. Additional costs that make up that three hundred and forty thousand, there's another sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight that includes, included in change order number one. These are, which are funded by the grant. These are different things during construction that we found out, some different solutions to reconstructing some of the walkways, drainage, irrigation, HVAC systems, a little additional asphalt out there, and then decommissioning two chimneys that are no longer in use, which will actually help the roofing project. Total for change order number one, again, is three hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and nine dollars, putting the new contract amount at one million, five hundred and fifty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-two.
One million, what? One million eight?
One million five.
One million five. Are we gonna be able to spend all two million? Or are we gonna run a little short?
Nope, I think we're gonna be spending all of it.
Okay. Under this contract or different contracts?
So we've had this, we've had a couple other repairs. We were reimbursed for some spends, expenses early on.
Did you hear that?
Yeah, I know.
And then we have also a fire sprinkler upgrade that we can do if what or not we don't spend it all in between now and.
Okay.
So, yep.
The mayor is kindly saying, I told you so. With that, and this is definitely, obviously, we need to take care of this and, and I'm glad we can use the homeless, the money on this. But I'll make a motion for the city council to approve the contract change order number one with Rudnick and Sons LLC in the amount of three hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and nine dollars and authorize the mayor's signature.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Poyer, second by Councilmember Hornby, to approve the contract change order number one with Rudnick and Sons LLC in the amount of three hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and nine dollars and authorize the mayor's signature. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. When it's done, I'd like to go out and peek.
For sure.
Just get a little tour. I'm not, don't need to get on the roof, but probably show me the things that we did that.
Roof's got a nice view.
Because there's some walls that, outside walls that we had, I mean, there's lots of stuff we did, so.
The retaining wall.
Yeah. I was like, look, I haven't been out there in forever.
On the west side, it's, it's actually, it's been all reconstructed right now. It looks pretty good. Granted, still no grass yet. That's coming in the next few weeks, so, for sure.
All right, thanks, Aaron.
Yep. Got another item here, too.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
Agreement with DOH for architectural engineering on a couple of city projects. So, Mr. Kelly.
So my second item here is the contract amendment number four to the professional services agreement with DOH Associates to provide architectural and engineering services for tenant improvements. Back in December, we actually hired DOH and Associates to assist the Facilities Division with some design tasks and engineering tasks. We have used DOH Associates to evaluate such as tenant improvements, renovations to the public service center, and repairs of the museum. Currently, DOH is helping us to do the tenant improvements on the third floor here at City Hall for the lease with the Department of Enterprise Services for the AG's office. The amendment number four increases the total contract amount into a hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Funding for the services are funded through the facilities budget, and then the cost for the tenant improvements will also be reimbursed by Department Enterprise Services after it's completed. So this is just actually setting us up to be able to actually have them do the rest of the tenant improvements design and so we can get out to bid.
So the plan is, is to be doing the five thousand square feet of the third floor this fall, because we were supposed to have tenants in there by November. And then the new facilities building out there, so they can move out of the police station. Is that gonna be a fall project, too?
Yep, it's, it's, we're trying to be able to get bids on it right now.
All right. All right, any questions for Aaron? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your honor, I make a motion for city council to authorize the mayor to sign contract amendment number four with the, to the professional service agreement on behalf of the city with DOH Associates, Inc. for architectural and engineering services for tenant improvement developments.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Hornby, to authorize the mayor to sign a contract amendment number four to the professional services agreement on behalf of the city with DOH Associates, Inc. for architectural and engineering services for tenant improvement developments. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
Laura, the ever-confusing opioid settlement. And I don't have the language.
Oh, I can give you my agenda report.
All right, here's some language. Thank you.
All right, good evening, council, mayor. The item before you is in our local agreement between Schlang County, Douglas County, Grant County, Okanagan County, City of Wenatchee, City of East Wenatchee, and City of Moses Lake. So the city participated in the settlement for, with opioid distributors through the One Washington MOU. So that MOU established the framework for distributing the funds. So, you know, the kind of the allocations, who gets what. But the MOU also provided information on how to establish the opioid abatement council, which is what this ILA in our local is setting up. So the opioid abatement council is responsible for overseeing the distribution of the funds, the distribution of the funds, annual review of expenditure reports, reporting and making publicly decisions on the fund allocations, developing a public dashboard, hearing complaints, and other relevant data collection. So in essence, they will be the body, it will be the body, that will compile all of the information of what all of the different entities are spending, how they're spending it, and provide that to the public as a one-stop shop. The city and the other participating local governments maintain full discretion over how to use the funds. We do have to go through a public process and set up opportunities for community-based inputs if this agreement is approved. So we still have some administrative stuff and some discretion over how those used funds are spent. But we do have to enter into this agreement in order to be able to access the funds. That is part of the overall settlement. So with that, I know that was kind of quick, but happy to answer any questions you may have.
So the agreement, Danielle's been working on it. I think it's pretty close to being in final form, but the other counties haven't agreed to it. I think some of the changes that we've made, so I think we're asking for me to be able to get it to final form and sign. Everything comes with a bit of a, you know, we sort of thought we got some money that we could go figure out how to spend ourselves. And now we have to go have, have an abatement council. And quite frankly, this might work really similar to CDBG in terms of administrated, administration costs and having to have people apply for the money. And I mean, there's gonna be some process to this that only government can do. I think Chief has some pretty good ideas of what he would want to do with it, but it sounds like we gotta jump through a bunch of hoops before we get to do it.
I, I still think the bottom line is, it's gonna bring some money into our area to help the problem with the opioid crisis, because this money can only be spent to.
Correct, it's for opioid preventative strategies. And so it's, you know, diversion programs, it's, there's a whole exhibit in the One Washington MOU.
The bottom line is, it's worth going through some of the hoops we have to go through, and we still need to be a part of it so it can help in our area as well.
All right, so here's the motion that Laura drafted.
Just a question. The, your governmental agreement agreements are fairly vague in terms of who's gonna do what.
Yes.
Like, who's gonna be the fiscal agent, if you will? Is there going to be one? Or is it just, folks are just gonna get money and do their own thing? Is there staffing commitments to an organization?
All of that is yet to be determined, which is, I think, the frustrating part of the agreement is that we need a council. We all haven't agreed on how it all is supposed to work. But we have to have this to get phase one, and you have to trust us to get it to phase two and phase three to figure all of this stuff out. It's quite possible that all of this ends up with the counties in charge of doing it. Wouldn't be my first choice, but there's a chance it ends up that way. But I, going back to Keith's point, it's the only way the money's gonna get in the area somehow. And we hope that we have enough say at the table that it does the things that we think are important. But Mark, absolutely, I think it's, I think Danielle's first comment is this is not as vague as an agreement as she's ever seen. But on the same token, we have to have one. And what, if you're negotiating with Okanagan County, which we're not, right? This was drafted by Schlang County with a couple of tweaks. This is a bit of a leap of faith.
We, we do have the ability, and lots of other agencies have assigned those, the administrative reporting to an entity, to like a firm, that, so that is a discussion that's had, and that's how it's written as of now, that is the intention of the parties. But as the mayor mentioned, it hasn't been formalized. But, because really, the OAC is that reporting agency. They don't have discretion over how we use the funds. That still is the local level, so each of the cities still gets to do that and have their processes for that. So that's not included. A lot of, there's more detail on this, too, in the actual One Washington MOU. In that language, we kind of just carried it over. So this is bare bones to get the OAC established, so then we can figure out how to hopefully assign it to a third party on the administrative side.
All right, any questions? Sorry for the inability to get, I guess, the motions on the thing. I didn't realize it was there. If not, I would entertain a motion. Your honor, I'll make a motion for the city council to authorize the mayor to sign the interlocal agreement in substantially similar form between Schlang County, Douglas County, Grant County, Okanagan County, City of Wenatchee, East Wenatchee, and the City of Moses Lake for the purposes of establishing the opioid abatement council for the north central region. Second. Motion by Councilmember Hornby, second by Councilmember Roger Nositi, to authorize the mayor to sign the interlocal agreement in substantially similar form between Schlang County, Douglas County, Grant County, Okanagan County, City of Wenatchee, City of East Wenatchee, and the City of Moses Lake for the purposes of establishing the opioid abatement council for the north central region. I will make one other comment. The One Washington, whatever you call that, requires us to use the boundaries of the affordable communities of health.
Correct, that is why all of the entities are included.
We don't have a choice but to use that geographical region as the region. They don't take the money, they don't do anything with the money, they're not even having to do with it. We're just forced to use that region, which is why we've got Grant County and Moses Lake and others, because they're part of that region. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Laura. Thanks for all your work on that and Danielle. Thank you for getting that done in a timely manner. Mayor's report. No idea. When was the last time we met?
Two weeks ago.
All right, so Memorial Day ceremonies were great at both the cemetery, and I did the pedestrian bridge. So that was a very nice, very nice ceremonies at both places. It is time for the high school kids to finish up their projects. We've been doing a lot of interviews with high school kids who are doing some sort of government project, so we spent quite a bit of time doing that. We did meet on ongoing discussions on the multifamily tax exemption. So we will have, I think, in a month or so, or maybe the end of this month. We approved a twelve-year tax exemption for a property near Wenatchee High School, some apartments that went in, and they have asked us to reconsider and have that be the eight-year exemption. So that was a contract between us and the developer, so they will be coming back in three or four weeks and asking for that to be changed. So I just wanted to make you aware that that's coming. There'll be a council, there'll be an agenda report from staff and all of that, but.
And the difference is that eight is just market, and the twelve was that they were to provide.
Yes, absolutely.
Low-market rate units there.
Yes. You got it a hundred percent correct.
Which also led to some of the other concessions, I think, that we made in the design.
I think, I think.
Parking and whatnot.
Yeah, I think staff will be able to sort of address that in terms of what else we may have given them between the eight and the twelve. I don't think it was substantial. I think we all looked at ourselves and said, really? Someone's gonna do the twelve-year? Right? I think we all sort of went, really? So anyhow, you'll hear from the developer, they'll come back, it'll be in a couple of weeks. I did have a, a meeting, and Councilmember Kula will beat me over the head for this, or he'll say, I told you so. Like, I just told you, I told you so. So I did meet with the young woman who was running the Schlang Douglas County Land Trust. As you know, the Land Trust is our middleman for acquiring all the foothills, and they are required to maintain the foothills. And they are finding them to be well-used, and they are falling behind, I think, a little bit in their maintenance and asking for some perhaps money to help maintain the foothills, which has always been our biggest concern when we took all those on, is what does the long-term maintenance look like? So I think she will come and introduce herself to you at a time near and dear to you, and we will have to consider whether or not we put some city taxpayer dollars into helping them with maintenance. Or maybe even lodging tax dollars, quite frankly. I think Laura thinks that's a, be a good use of lodging tax dollars, because lots of folks are staying here and using those dollars in the foothills, so. Anything else, Laura? We did meet regarding our parking position, our parking enforcement position, so it is out for ad. Again, I think the only. Again, I think the only change we made was that you didn't have to have law enforcement background.
I think the preference is always there for someone to have law enforcement background, we're taking a look at it with a lighter view.
Yeah.
As to, and focusing more on someone who has customer service, someone who, you know, has more of the skillset of the ticket and the customer interaction piece, less law enforcement.
Yeah.
So, it'd be great if they had it, but it's not top tier.
I'd like to bring up the discussion we had at Public Works about a possible community resource officer.
Yeah, I think Chief did mention the fact that he is sort of interested in perhaps having a non-commissioned community resource officer who can get out and be involved in the parks a little bit more and meet with some of the homeless folks, and so he is one short. I think we budgeted for forty-five officers, he has forty-four, so I told him if he thought that was important, he should come to us, so we could figure out a way to get that funded, and so I think he's thinking about that and what that program would look like. And I think Keith mentioned a little bit about having the bird scooter folks come in, so I think we'll have the, whoever's operating bird scooters come in and introduce themselves to you guys in the next, hopefully, two or three weeks. I know they're out there, they're sort of in a bunch of interesting spots, but if you remember, the first time we did it, Tony and Tony showed up and spent some time with us, and I don't believe it's Tony and Tony anymore, so we'll get the new folks in to at least say hi to you guys and let them know what they're doing. Mark, anything for the good of the order?
The museum and cultural center board had a retreat specifically focused on the Capitol campaign that the museum is kicking off for the renovations of the, of the building and the exhibits down there. More to follow, I'm sure there'll be some additional asks of, of the city that we'll want to, want to consider in that process.
Yeah, I think for us, it's the timing of the money and, and so, but I, I think that will be something we can work out with them.
Yep.
Travis?
Nope, nothing.
Mr. Top?
Michael? Shalane Douglas Transportation Council, we went over the twenty-fifty regional transportation plan and did a survey.
Wow, you were planning way in advance, aren't you?
Well, it's a, it's a survey, it's kind of interesting how things come up, but it's, it could almost be interpreted that people may be interested in having a tax for improvement of roads. So, I thought that was interesting, that it's, that was kind of shocked all of us on that board.
But, but when you think about who taxes their citizens for roads in this region, based on the transportation benefit district, it is east Wenatchee and is Wenatchee, it's not Shalane County, it's not Douglas County, level worth as in Shalane does. So, I have always been a proponent of if we all did one-tenth, then the county would have a lot more money to do roads, right? And so would Douglas County, but they choose not to do those things, and then, of course, they don't have any, enough money for roads.
If you want the survey, let me know, I'll email it to you, or I can just automatically email it to you.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Jose, anything for the good of the order?
I don't have anything, but I would like to say that mosquitoes are out again.
Okay.
And I'd like to see, I don't know, the PUD takes care of that?
So, yeah, it's hard to, one, take care of mosquitoes, second, they can do some spraying, but I don't think the PUD's ever sprayed down here, have they? Did they spray?
Yes, you already did.
Did they spray a little bit? Yeah.
And, and that seems to be the breeding ground area, because there's just a lot of standing water down there.
A lot of standing water.
So, we will reach out to the PUD and see what their plan is for mosquito prevention.
Picking up bites. I don't have any idea where.
All right.
I haven't been by the river.
Next Thursday, we are not meeting, and so I will be doing the Wenatchee World Housing Forum next Thursday evening, and then we will meet again on the twenty-second at five-fifteen PM. A little bit of a longer agenda next, in two weeks? Okay. So, I'm supposed to be at a dinner at the hotel at six-thirty or so.
Councilmember Harold and I will be in Spokane at the Association of Washington Cities Conference, and our business meeting is scheduled to go to five-forty-five, but if we can get, like, the voting stuff done prior to council starting, I'm sure we can join in.
Well, let's sort of see what's on the, on the agenda, and let's just touch base before you go, just to see if it's...
Yep.
I will be traveling, but I'll do my best to call in.
Okay. That means the other four of you guys better be here, I'll come be dragging you, dragging you in. All right, with that, we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.